We don't have to go through the other one.
Okay. All right, welcome, everybody. We will convene the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of January 5th, 2022. The clerk, go help me with the roll, please.
Barrington, Barrington is absent. Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman? Freeman is absent. McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Eight present.
Okay, if you'll stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for our country, our community, and our freedoms. And we pray for the families of the seven victims murdered in Highland Park and for those injured by this evil, senseless act of hate. We ask that you comfort their loved ones and the Highland Park community at this time of their great sorrow. We thank you for all our military service members, both past and present, and for their sacrifice so that we can live in this great nation. And we also thank you for our police and fire first responders in our community and throughout this country, and we pray for their safety. As we conduct our city's business here this evening, we ask that you give us wisdom, compassion, patience, and courage. We ask for these things in Christ's name. Amen. All right, we don't have anybody, excuse me, we don't have anybody registered for public comment, but I did, I do know that Brent and I had talked a little bit, and Brent had a, something he wanted to comment in public on this evening, so Brent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder, our stormwater utility open house is scheduled for this Thursday here in the City Council chambers from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., where we'll have members from Faragam and the cities, the city to answer resident questions about the stormwater, proposed stormwater utility.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Item four, we have approval of minutes. Approval A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of June 20th, '22 as presented. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Mahal, second by Alderman Flurry. Any corrections on those minutes? Any questions, comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Item five, we have no public hearing tonight. No special. Item six, no special messages and proclamations. We have item seven, approval of expenditures. We have none. Item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers under A. Approval of the minutes of the committee of the whole, public safety, finance, and personnel dated June 27th, 2022 as presented. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions, any comments regarding that motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Under item nine, unfinished business. We have first for a second reading. Item A, ordinance 584-H is up before you for a second reading. Excuse me, an ordinance granting a special use to allow a planned development within the general business district located at 320 West Chrysler Drive. We do have the applicants here from Dunkin' Donuts with us. If anybody has any questions for them, otherwise could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Is there any comment, any questions regarding that? Alderman Porter?
I just had one question. Where exactly is the exit from the drive-thru going to exit out of? It's hard to tell from the drawing here.
So the traffic will come down Pearl Street, go in through the curb cut that's already there, that accesses the entire strip mall, then go up the drive aisle to the top, almost to the frontage road to get in, and then the drive-thru lane will then go down, swoop behind the building, and then come back in and come out the same. So it's the longest possible stacking length that could be figured on the site to try to keep as much of the traffic onsite as possible. Yeah, they did put, it'll look a little weird because it'll just be a random curb there, but that was to keep people from jumping the line or turning too wide and dipping into the strip mall's access. So it'll look a little weird, but that's to keep the traffic as onsite as possible.
Okay, thank you, Gina. Any other questions regarding the motion and second on the floor? Okay, hearing none. Those in favor of ordinance 584-H, an ordinance granting a special use to allow a planned development within the general business district located at 320 West Chrysler Drive. Will, when their name is called, answer yes. Those opposed, no.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And thank you to the applicants for being here this evening. Appreciate you doing business in Belvidere. Yeah, you're on your own now.
Thank you, be safe, everyone.
Take care. Thank you. All right, we have item B, ordinance 585-H for a second reading, and ordinance granting a special use to allow a mural within the central business district located at 106 North State Street, which is the Apollo. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Alderwoman Frank?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Is this, is this already up? Is it already?
No.
I don't know, it's gonna be...
No, it's, there is the mural on the building already, the one that's painted on the building. This one will be mounted to wood and put up there. That's why they need a special use, because it's a different, if they were just repainting it like the American House, they wouldn't need permission. It's because it's going to be mounted differently, so you know, it's like a new thing. I believe right now it's at the art gallery at the museum on display, but it is not mounted on the wall of the Apollo yet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance 585-H, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay? As the clerk calls a roll.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And we have item C, ordinance 586-H for a second reading tonight, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment within the central business district located at 119 South State Street. That is for Gomez Restaurant. The applicant is here. If anybody has any questions, could I have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions regarding that motion? Alderwoman Frank?
Um, Gina, is this supposed to be a kid's party, you know, like a party playhouse or something?
It's an eve, it's a special use for an event center. I mean, obviously the special use for indoor commercial entertainment encompasses multiple things. The applicant's intention is to do an event center, kind of like Hidden Area, the Apollo, VFW, just a rentable hall. So it could be rented for birthday parties, it could be rented for small weddings, it could be rented for graduation parties, 50th anniversaries. It's just an, it's a rentable event space.
Okay. With that said, I was wondering if that was a good place for gaming, if there were children present?
So if, right now, there's not really any licenses available for gaming, obviously that is a possibility. They would have to adhere to the state with keeping minors out of the gaming area, so they would have to have some kind of demarcation to comply with that factor. And as a business owner, it would be up to them to see if it hinders their rentals by having that presence, or if it helps their rentals.
So it would only be open during their business hours?
Well, the special use for indoor commercial entertainment, it could be a pool har, pool hall, a bar, video gaming, an event center. Obviously, size is always a matter. I think it'd be kind of small for a pool hall, but you never know. Their intent is event center, but yes, other, it could become a bar and video gaming. As I stated, there are no real video gaming licenses available, so the likelihood of that is slim, but it is a possibility.
And I don't believe they've applied for a liquor license at this time either.
You guys have not applied for a liquor license, correct, at this point?
Yeah, and you can't do the video game without the liquor license, so. They can't even do the video gaming there because they don't have a liquor license at this point.
Okay, thank you, Alderwoman Frank. All right, any other questions regarding the motion and the second on the floor? Right, hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance 586-H, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment within the central business district located at 119 South State Street. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay? As the clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And we have item D, ordinance 587-H, has a second reading before you this evening, an ordinance amending Chapter 150, zoning ordinance of the municipal code, Sections 150.013, definitions, 150.204D, non-residential districts, planned business and general business, 150.204D, commercial land uses, vehicle repair and maintenance and car detailing shop, 150.702, width of driveways, 150.704, parking space design standards, Table 150.704-F8 regarding dimensions, and Appendix C, land use summary, commercial. Can I get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Any questions regarding that? Gina, did you want to just refresh our memory on that? I think we have the vehicle repair, or the car detailing is something that's been added, but...
Yep, so this is a tax amendment that was brought upon by staff, not an applicant. It, I know there's lots of sections covered, but it really highlights two areas. One is car detailing. Right now, everything is grouped together for car maintenance and repair, so even stuff as minor as tinted windows, stereo installation, stuff that's almost more retail in nature is grouped with that. And therefore, we're finding a lot of those businesses being illegally run out of houses because to go through the special use process, or to get landlords saying, okay, go through the special use process, is quite difficult for what is really a minor kind of business. So we thought it best to split the vehicle repair and maintenance category so that you have your standard vehicle repair and maintenance, which is your paint booth and your auto body stuff that has lots of noise and smells and vibration, stuff you don't, you know, you want a special use. And then breaking out the smaller car detailing shop uses to make them permitted as a way to hopefully encourage them to be in storefronts and not have to constantly be chasing people out of home occupations. So that is the first one. The second one is with parking lot regulations. Me and Brent were talking about something one day, and it came to light that our zoning code had one set of regulations as far as parking lot stall size, drive aisle width, and the IDOT standards was completely different. So me and Brent were reviewing things on two different requirements. So to make it easier and to be in line with IDOT, which is what, you know, architects and, you know, state licensed professionals are used to dealing with, we are amending our code to meet IDOT standards, which will actually hopefully improve things because it does make the parking spaces slightly larger, drive aisle slightly wider, which is really the trend of vehicles. Obviously, in a rural area, you have larger vehicles, trucks, safety features such as airbags, and crash panels make vehicles wider. So this will hopefully improve parking lots designed in the future.
Alderman Snow?
So to reiterate, as far as residential, people are still not going to be allowed to have detailing and stereo installation and things like that.
Correct. That is still not allowed. Unfortunately, you know, code enforcement sends them a violation and says you need to relocate. A month later, they're still operating, they get the ticket, and they say, I can't find anyone that will rent to me because the landlord doesn't want to sign off on the special use application. So then it's constantly chasing them from one garage to another because then they just, you know, bounce between friends' houses, hopefully making it easier to set up shop. For something that's, again, window detailing, car stereo, that's really minor stuff, hopefully they, it's easier to get them out of the houses then.
And the other is with the parking. So a lot of times, your zoning requirements dictate based on the business and the size of the establishment, that they need X number of spots. How is that going to affect? For instance, when Aldi's expanded, they took away some of the spots, and then they ridiculously painted smaller lines, and now they all bleed through, so you don't know what line you're going to. And in some cases, all it did was, between two islands, made a big striped area, which made no sense. So just curious to see if this is going to be more conducive to, or can we lighten up on the number of stalls needed, or look at that on the, as-needed basis?
So the minimum amount of parking, what Alderman Snow's referring to is, retail is one space per 300 square feet, restaurants are one per three seats. We have a ratio to tell how much parking is needed for a site. That is not changing. This will increase, so all these stalls now would be too small to meet code. So it will, and like Walgreens, that's obviously a very tight fit, just trying to get up and down those drive aisles, that's a sharp curve, especially with the larger vehicles, or if someone's not parked in and they're kind of hanging over a little bit. So we won't have issues like that anymore with the tight-fit stalls and the tight-fit drive aisles turning around a corner, but it won't impact the minimum amount needed.
So if, say Walgreens has a minimum of 30 slots, but now they can have, they're gonna, next time they restripe, they need to be slightly bigger, they're gonna lose spots potentially, are they not?
Restriping, they, it would still be grandfathered, so their lot, their parking design would be grandfathered if they're just restriping it. Now, if they're ripping up the whole parking lot and kind of altering the configuration, yes, that would need to be brought into compliance. But just restriping it, we have to typically let them stick as is because then it could end up reducing the amount of parking, which is just as bad as having a tight-fit parking lot, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the motion before us? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 587-H, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay?
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And we have item 10, number 10, item A, Resolution 20 dash, or 2022-13, a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for MFT funding for street maintenance and overlay. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any questions regarding that motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay? Clerk calls a roll, please.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item B, motion to waive Section 2-88, which is referrals to committee of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code with respect to adjustment of wages. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions regarding that? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. This was brought up last week, but it was not talked about publicly. Is there a reason that we're trying to waive it? Is there a timeframe that we need to speed this up?
Well, I think we are going to have a personnel change at City Hall, and so in order to prepare for that, I think it would be most appropriate to do that now. So that's the reason. We are going to have a change in personnel. I don't want to disclose, say anything more than that, that individual, but yeah. So there, it is somewhat time-sensitive just based upon a personnel change forthcoming. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, will answer yes. Any opposed, no? As the clerk calls a roll, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And then regarding, regarding item C, the adjustment of wages, I would ask for a motion to increase the salary of the assistant clerk to $17.71 per hour. If I could get a motion to that effect. Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderwoman Prather. And as we had discussed about, we are going to have an individual that's going to be coming in, and my thought was in order to create some parity from the existing administrative staff, it is not going to change the budget. It won't increase the budget. It will be a salary exchange, basically, for the individual that has seniority, to put them in line with the other, with the other administrative assistants. And then the new, the new anticipated hire will take that lower rate. So it was an exchange, but no, no changes in the budget number, no changes in anything, no amendments needed to the budget. Any questions? All right. Did I get them? I got a motion, second on that? Yeah, I did, okay. Hearing no other questions. All those in favor, will, when the clerk calls a roll, answer aye. Any opposed, nay?
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, thank you. And motions forwarded from the committee of the whole, public safety, finance, and personnel of June 27, 2022. Motions of public safety, Chairman Stevens?
A, motion to authorize the purchase of a EOTech Mono NV Generation 3 White Phosphor Night Vision Device with NorTros Night Vision Helmet Mount and Adapter for the total of $5,417.94 using funds budgeted in the Equipment Line Item 01-5-210-8200.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion out of committee. Is there any discussion on that motion? Any questions? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor will answer aye. Any opposed, nay? As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank? McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Alderman, Chairman Stevens?
B, motion to authorize the purchase of four Motorola Starcom APX 4000 portable radios and accessories for a total of $17,644.8 using funds budgeted in the Equipment Line
Okay, any questions on the motion out of committee, as stated? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay?
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Thank you.
C, motion to purchase annual subscription to utilize First Due Records Management Suite at a cost of $14,700 to be paid out of line item 01-5-220-7020.
Okay, motion out of committee. Is there any questions regarding that motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, will, when the clerk calls a roll, say aye. Any opposed, nay?
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, motion passed. Thank you, Chairman Stevens. And motion out of Public Works, Chairwoman Freeman is gone. Alderman Snow, would you help us out here?
Sure, please. Waive the bidding process for pumping equipment at Newburgh Number 1 Lift Station.
Okay, motion out of committee. Any questions regarding that motion?
Actually, we need a motion and a second.
Make the motion.
Okay. Okay, motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Prather. Okay, any questions, any concerns regarding that motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor will say aye. Any opposed, nay? As a clerk calls a roll.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you.
E, motion to approve the purchase of two 15-horsepower guns draw pumps, base elbows, and stainless steel guardrails from Gav's Vaca and Associates in the amount of $41,020.01. This equipment to be paid from, from the Sewer Depreciation Fund 61-1780.
Okay. Do we have any questions regarding that motion out of committee? All right, hearing none. I don't know, but the amount is $41,029, is that right? Correct. Okay, okay. All those, all those in favor will say aye. Any opposed, nay? When the clerk calls a roll, please.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
F, motion to approve the proposal from Saroni Piping in the amount of $13,698.01 for the replacement of pump equipment at Newburgh Number 1 Lift Station, including bypass pumping. This work to be paid for from the Sewer Depreciation Fund 61-1780.
Okay, thank you. Motion out of committee. Any questions regarding that motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor will say aye. Any opposed, nay? As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
G, motion to approve the proposal from Ingle Electric in the amount of $7,686.01 for the electrical upgrades at Newburgh Number 1 Lift Station. This work to be paid for from the Sewer Depreciation Fund Number 61-1780. This work will be paid for from the, okay, reiteration, nevermind.
All right, we have a motion out of committee. Any questions regarding that motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor will say aye. Any opposed, nay? As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?